I will call this meeting to order and we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have what we want to do with the consent agenda?
I agree.
Second?
On favor.
The next upcoming select board meeting is Thursdays, September 15th, 5:30 here at the town hall. Madeline, do you have any comments?
I have no comments.
I had no comments.
Okay. From the reader on here.
Item number one on the agenda is the Long Road Reconstruction Bid Award. Bids were open on August 24th. We received four bids that were handled by Pine Tree Engineering. The apparent low bidder is Pratt &amp; Sons Incorporated, and I included that bid for your review.
I move for you award the bid to Pratt &amp; Sons Incorporated as they were the low bidder. Let me just take a peek at it.
Can we have a start? Start beat on it, Kristen?
None that I'm aware of. It was in the specifications. It's possible it was in the specifications, but I'm not aware of the specifics. It just needs to be completed by October 14th.
October 14th?
Yes, Kate.
Can you tell us what the bids were and who did it?
Oh, we had Pratt &amp; Sons at $152,200. Little Fields Construction at $157,000. Reno's excavation at $189,980. And Jay Pratt Construction at $190,000.
My second proposal?
All in favor? Business item number two, Sabino parking ordinance review.
We did receive feedback from the town attorney today, so this information wasn't included in your packet for review, but it is in your packet tonight. She made many changes to the ordinance to make it into something that could be enforceable. It would still require enforcement by the Shellfish Warden and/or the Sagittaw County Sheriff's Office. So since we're getting to the point where Sagittaw County would be our Shellfish Warden, per se, it would be up to Sheriff Mary whether or not they would be willing to enforce this parking ordinance for the town of West Bath.
So I have more concern with question. I really struggle with permission to be issued at the town office. We don't know how many parking spaces are there. I don't think we should be handing out permits. I don't think that's the town's responsibility. I don't think it's something we should be...
Well, the notice says that the selectman can determine how many permits to give out. So in theory, the selectman could either put a limit on it or not issue permits.
Right.
So if we are issuing permits, how are they going to park there?
The same way people would park anywhere in town. I'm just concerned we're putting another responsibility on the town and we don't even know how many parking spaces are there, so why are we issuing permits? And how do we determine how many to issue?
I think at this point in time, Kathy, I think you're right on because as it is today, we cannot enforce the ordinance we have, let alone what Sally recommends for amendments to that ordinance. I think once we have a survey done to determine exactly what the town owns and, you know, possibly mark out parking spaces that will work, I don't think that it serves the town to have an ordinance on books that we cannot enforce and to issue parking permits.
It might be helpful for the public to see what the highlights are. One of the suggestions for amendment is that in the ordinance, the term vehicle rather than motor vehicle is used to allow the town to cite and move boat, trailer, or other vehicles that may be illegally parked or otherwise blocking traffic. Another section would create a violation for parking an otherwise permitted vehicle partially on private property intended to capture additional other concerns about vehicles effectively straddling the border between town and private property while parking. Next proposal is to provide a prohibition on idling for longer than five minutes to capture other concerns expressed to the town. Another proposed amendment authorizes the Shellfish Warden to enforce the ordinance, and the proposal adds the Sheriff Department as a secondary enforcement agency, even though we know that their involvement has been and will likely continue to be minimal. It proposes doubling the waiver fee when the person cited does not pay the fee within 15 days. It suggests some revised penalties and waiver fees to be more realistic. And there's a lot of changes for clarity's sake, but the town is, by the ordinance proposed, authorized to contract with a third-party towing company to tow and impound illegally parked vehicles. The owners of the vehicles will be provided with a written notice of towing and are then responsible for arranging the release of the car from that third-party towing company. And she notes that there should be sign posted at the landing that gives a vehicle owner notice of the possibility of being towed if illegally parked and that identifies who to call if towed, and we would need to be, we would need to make that decision. And then there's a new proposal, completely different, that the town, and Ms. Daggett suggests that the town may not want to go this far, and that would allow the town to refuse to re-register a vehicle that has outstanding parking citations. This would be to incentivize compliance, but she adds, "Please understand that while the few municipalities have this provision in their parking ordinances, this provision may be subject to a legal challenge since vehicle registration is the prominence of the state of Maine, and it could be argued that West Bath can't condition any such vehicle registration on unpaid local parking citation." And those are the highlights.
And it all makes sense if it could be enforceable at this stage.
Do you have a question? Would you please identify, just tell us who you are?
My name is Nigel Gaynor. I know I'm new here to this, but I've been here for over a decade. I agree with Ms. Pollan before any other decisions need to be made. We need to figure out what the lines are, and this affects me, somebody who is a beginner worm digger who thinks about using Sabino Road. I would like to follow the rules the way they're supposed to be, but as it sits, what are those lines? I mean, we got to figure out what those lines are before we set permits and tow your car and this and that and the other.
Yeah. And I think at the very least, we need some more time for the public to examine the proposal and for the Sabino Association to have a look at it, for the Shellfish Harvesters to take a look at it at the meeting at the end of the month, to say nothing of casual users who come down and put their canoe or their kayak or whatever over, so that people have a chance to see it. My observation is that this is a very helpful place to start, so it's very fair and very even-handed.
Name's Ken Davis. I have a question. How are we going to determine who gets a permit or not?
Well, that would be, that would be one of the questions that we would need to figure out, whether or not there is actually a permitting process that would be even possible.
Because, I mean, that opens up a possibility of people who didn't purchase them that I think we saw, too.
Right. And that's...
That has to offer anybody.
Right.
Any resident of the town of West Bath.
Correct. Correct. So that would be one of the things that we would definitely need to talk about. Everybody would need to be in on that conversation, how to make sure that that was fair when we know that the resource is limited when it comes to parking.
So I guess there's also one thing that I haven't seen here is hours of operation, not nomination.
Well, I suppose it could be made part of the ordinance or it should be a policy when we get to that stage.
There's a sign, there's a sign down there that states it's not clear.
That sounds, it said like, I think she had a between the hours of midnight and four or something.
It was 10 o'clock, is it? Do you guys know down there?
I think it says overnight.
Yeah. Oh, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 a.m., parking.
10 to 4.
Yep.
And that may not be accurate because if a wormer is parked down there, they don't have those same restrictions.
Right.
So we need to look at that, too, and make sure that it isn't...
But still follow the line of like the idling of the...
Well, yeah, but it might have to have more language saying, "For this purpose, these are the hours."
Just for a helpful comment, the Shellfish Ordinance references sunrise to sunset as defined for a gesture.
For shellfish harvesting.
Yeah.
And as Clint pointed out last, last meeting, worm harvesting is a different ball bag.
Yeah.
So some of us might not like that as much, but that's the way it is, and I don't anticipate that's going to be changing anytime soon. The attempt to change that has been made many times.
Yeah. Brad, Brad Smith. I was just wondering if you folks made a comment about a meeting at the end of the month, and we've been away for a lot of the summer. What's that meeting at the end of the month?
Has not been set.
Can you tell us a little bit more about it, what you're trying to pull together?
Well, the idea was to have a meeting in which our Marine Resources folk and folks who live near the landing would be involved, just to iron out the difficulties or just talk about the difficulties.
Sure.
Human to human, what might be done in either direction to ease the tensions.
Good. Sounds like a great idea.
Yeah, and that could happen regardless of whether or not the town's able to have an ordinance.
Sure.
It could be very productive.
Yeah.
For clarity's sake, you might consider, since the select board is responsible for enacting traffic and parking ordinances, for clarity's sake, you could repeal the existing ordinance to make it clear that we aren't enforcing that ordinance. You could either do that or you could leave it on the books, whichever you prefer.
I think you do address the whole picture, though. I think we should maybe wait till we have a meeting, talk to the community, get feedback from everybody before we make any changes, one way or the other.
I'm kind of on my way to that, huh? I think, I think if we get this out to people, people can see it, people can look at it, people can give feedback on the meeting at the 15th, we can take care of it. The, the parking is not the only issue, and, and the meeting to iron out personal and personnel issues can take place anytime, but things would be clearer if we had a clear ordinance, and I think that's, needs to happen soon.
Karen?
There was a comment about our ordinance, no, no, obviously at night. Okay. So that doesn't mean we have, we don't have to leave before the tide goes out at night to get up on the mudflats or other regular boats. If everybody wants to push that, everybody's going to own airboats so we can skim out across the mud, and then there's going to be even more of those.
Yeah.
So we have to leave to get up over the mudflats and the regular boats before it's, before it's daylight, a lot of times, especially as the days get shorter.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So we need to, we need to take a look at that as part of the...
Because, I mean, it's only a short period of time of people leaving at 4:00 in the morning, and you just want to get some of those days of the year.
Right.
Nigel?
I just wanted to put the ones out there. I mean, no offense to the people with the boats, but, you know, I don't have a boat. I'm just, I'm a hand digger, so I've got to figure this out, how to do it respectfully with the people who own the property and this and that and the other, still make a living for my kids. So that's, that's what I'm looking for here as far as the clarity and everything. I mean, not to be rude or anything, but I would say if there's any kind of ordinance, repeal it now before there's any kind of action against you because it's not right. You see what I'm saying? If you're arguing over it now, repeal what's there, leave it open until your next meeting, figure out your lines and your rules, and then there's nothing.
And that's assuming that Sagittaw County is willing to enforce it, because we cannot enforce it on our own. I don't want anybody to be under the false idea that we're going to be able to enforce it on our own. We can't.
We don't have the capacity. So I think we should certainly wait until the next meeting. Has this been posted, the ordinance and proposed changes? So I think we should put that on the website. So I think we should put it on the website with a notice, people can pull it down and see what the changes are, what's written in the ordinance, and let people review it before I, want to make a decision without people having the opportunity to look at it as a whole.
Karen?
I'm still not clear on what the proposals are.
Yeah.
I just, I mean, it needs to be more black and white than that.
Well, we just got it today. So we'll post it.
Okay.
So we...
I mean, as I'm talking about, you're talking about approaching people's property, like we don't know exactly what you mean by that, either we're on it properly or not.
Yeah.
We have, we're going to survey to see where the property line is, generically, for the town versus the residents that are there.
Is there a date when that is, you think you might get that in, the survey?
Our assessing agent is doing some preliminary work. He's also a surveyor, and he has some records that he's doing some preliminary work to see what he can come up with for boundaries. I'm also working with the consultant for the Sabino Landing Project that we've been doing over the past several months, Vern Baker from GEI. We're working with the Island Institute to obtain a grant to have a survey of the property. So if we're able to get that grant, I think that will be our best bet of having everything refined.
So you basically need that survey in hand before you really have the meeting?
That's the first priority.
Right? Before we have this larger meeting you're talking about?
Oh, I don't, I don't think so.
We can have a meeting, that's fine, to just talk about how everything is working down there. It could be productive with or without an ordinance, with or without a survey, but certainly within the next month or so, we should know whether or not we're going to have a survey in the short term, and I'm pretty confident that we will.
And are you thinking you'll wait until you have the survey so you know what's going on down there before you vote on your ordinance?
The ordinance will require a couple of things. It will require the survey so that we know our boundaries.
Right.
And it will also require a buy-in from Sagittaw County Sheriff. So until those two things happen, we will not have an ordinance that's enforceable.
Would you also be public hearing on ordinance?
Sure. Makes sense. We should.
I mean, we literally just saw this material.
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that before the trial goes through, there will be an antithesis of a public hearing.
Looking at it, yeah.
I just want to say that while we're doing this, we shouldn't just be thinking Sabino, we need to think Bull Rock Road.
Yeah, all of our landings.
Absolutely.
It makes sense to survey all of our points of access and make sure that we have accurate
documents on file. Concerns of Sabino have come up, more and more concerns are now coming up on Bull Rock. So, you know, people parking there, the trailers there all winter, you know? So now those residences starting to get around. I don't blame them because I don't think we would have been aware of, to be honest with you, everything that's happening at Sabino and Bull Rock.
Sure.
It's definitely turned into a private parking place for docks and everything else over the way.
That's what I'm hearing.
You can't even pile with so much stuff in there.
So I think we need to do all of these as...
And long-term, it might be a good idea to have some discussion about where it's safe or not safe to park alongside the roads where people who, who are only going to be able to access the flats over land can park safely, because a few places where people have traditionally parked are fairly hazardous, especially in winter. So, so making, making things safe for anybody who's going to be on the flats is, is important.
And it's also the people on the roads.
And we're at a phase of transitioning into utilizing the sheriff to be our Shellfish Warden, per se, and so there's a whole, I'll say, evolution of this process that's in the works, and I think that we're working on going that the right way and making sure it addresses properly and makes things that, whatever we decide them to be, that are enforceable, which is the whole purpose of the memorandum of understanding, the MOU.
Yes, we want to just table this and do all your, all your information.
Yeah, I agree, and I think we should pause what we have here, post this on the website so people can see it. We just got it today and...
And I agree, and again, I just want us to look at a bigger picture, that this shouldn't just be Sabino, it should be all our access points to the water, so that we're not doing this again next week with different rules for a different landing. It should be consistent and fair across the boards.
Right, and that's a draft, correct?
Correct, yes. So I move that we table this. Did you have one more comment before the board?
I did, Michael Williams. Christine, you mentioned the timeline on the survey. Did you mention, do you have a sense of timeline with the Sheriff's Department as to when we might hear back whether they would enforce this?
That's actually the next agenda item. We have a draft MOU for the board to review.
That, if I understand it correctly, is for the Shellfish Ordinance.
Yes.
Is that also true for the parking ordinance potentially?
No, potentially, but not in the initial agreement. The initial agreement, just so we could get it off the ground, we'll just focus on the warden service.
So how long would you expect it to take to find out whether or not they would add the Sabino parking ordinance if enacted to that agreement?
Yeah, I think it'll take Joel probably a couple of months to determine how the enforcement is moving along and to decide if his officers are able to enforce parking in addition to the Shellfish Ordinance. So I would say before the end of the year, but it'll take a few months.
Seems like that's a really reasonable response, and I would just echo your comment. An ordinance is worthless without enforcement, and so, you know, in a sense, evading the ordinance before you know if you have boundaries and enforcement, I don't think it's a good use of anybody's time.
Well, I encourage everyone to read what we received this evening, put it on the website. You know, it's important that the community as a whole can work together as a whole to resolve this, and I think it's, we're, we're doing the best we can in the right direction. I heard Kathy, I'm looking at all of the West Bath owned waterfront properties on how we move that so it's fair and consistent.
There's also, Kathy, the Long Road access point, too.
Again, it just doesn't make sense to take one at a time because it should be the same rules for the same...
And eventually, I'd like this type of parking requirements, I'd like them incorporated into the waterways and harbor ordinance, so that if we could get to the point where we have one comprehensive dock in it, I think that would help the town move some clarity.
Well, and the community, you want to know what you can and can't do and go that the right way.
Do you have something to say before we go?
I have a motion on the table. I mean, I moved to...
Okay. All in favor?
Fully done.
Business item three, memorandum of understanding, marine law enforcement services.
The iteration that you have in your packet tonight is different than the one that I initially emailed to you on Tuesday. This is the second draft that Sheriff Mary came up with. There's a few tweaks to it. He and the county administrator are still working on the arbitration clause because they felt that we're tripping over language here, that it's far too complicated, and they're trying to simplify the language around that. So they're working with their attorney to do so.
So we're looking at using them for 10 hours a month?
That's just a number that he plugged in. I think that we would need feedback from the Marine Resources Board to determine how many hours of coverage would be appropriate. We certainly have enough money in the budget to do more than that.
Yeah, I bet it's enough to cover the, yeah, the coverage.
Agreed.
Is it apparent 12 hours a week?
I'd say something like a week.
Yeah, I thought 10 hours a month. I would have gone up.
And that's, and that's still not enough, really, but...
Yeah, no, we would need feedback on that.
The best source for how many hours it might take in high season would be Doug. He probably knows because he gave a lot of volunteer time.
Oh, yeah.
So we should, we should have a chat with Doug.
I think that the most, the simplest way to determine how many hours at this point would probably just to use our current budget, what we have left in the budget, plug in that amount of hours.
Right.
Because the county commissioners are meeting on the 13th, and it would be nice to have this wrapped up on the 13th.
Yes, you would.
And get somebody on the flash as soon as possible.
Do you think there's more time spent in the summer months than the winter months on the water, or do you think it's all year round?
All year round.
It does depend on if things ice over, which doesn't happen very often anymore.
This is true.
But you're also, you have to keep in mind that if the sheriff takes over this marine warden position and does all the local five towns, we may not be able to spell out how many hours he's going to go to West Bath, because you never know, he may spend 20 of West Bath one week or two the next week because he's going to go take around five towns.
Well, at this point, we're dealing with a single...
I know, and we have to change that down there. I know, and we have to change that down.
And I, I have a feeling right now, most of the time is going to be here.
Yeah, I understand...
No, in West Bath.
I understand from O'Keo Thompson that West Bath has the most flats. We have the most area to cover in the county.
No.
That's what he thought.
I don't know about that.
Yeah, we felt like it was, this is the town with the most, the requirement for the most power.
It's, 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 we're just being targeted by all of the coaches and stuff that come from...
So currently, we participate in, so I think that's that. Currently, we have, you say 10 hours, 10 to 12 hours a week. What, if you're going to wager a guess, what do you think that would be?
I would, at least 20.
A week?
Yeah, to start and see what they, they may be able to get it worked out so they can do their news announcements and check things out and be gone, you know? But, because like, like they, like they said, Dougie didn't get paid for a lot of the jobs. And I had an idea the next people aren't going to be like that.
Right.
They're going to be very efficient in the way that they approach it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, they're, the sheriff is going to have schedules if they're going to need to abide by. They're going to be here when they're supposed to. Um, and I think that our coverage will be pretty good. I'm confident about that.
So in this, um, you know, in fact, what, what are we having, we have in the budget for this?
Uh, we have about $10,000 left in the budget. So you have a nice...
So it's roughly 200 hours between now and June? Yeah, um, so we'll have to...
The, 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 for the public again, the, the cost of having a deputy sheriff working as our warden is, um, the total cost is $53 to $56, um, per hour, which includes the overtime rate of pay and the, and their fringe benefits. So, um, and that rate depends on, on who is selected to do that. Somebody with more seniority obviously would go with a higher rate.
And the town wouldn't have the, um, employee liability anymore for that position because it, we would be under contract rather than employing somebody.
So it's roughly 20 hours a month, um, basic math between now and June, um, if you have $10,000 left. And certainly, I, I agree with David, the winter will maybe be less because of icing over, so it's getting, um, you know, that doesn't, that doesn't ice the way you should.
Well, it doesn't.
This is going to be a very different scenario.
Winter time brings other troubles too, because people get hard out. Bills are more expensive, heating, Christmas, people need money. So they're going to, they, they, there's times when they come out and fork fours. And it, it needs to be covered. I mean...
But look, at least it's 20 hours a month versus 10 right now. At least double that or, you know, we'll see financially.
And again, this is another one of those trying to move in the right direction.
Absolutely.
So if we can get the other three, four towns to join us, well, if the county decides to put a, right, an employee in, you know, to cover the, the communities that are having this, that's a whole other piece.
We're, we're developing this project.
First thing first.
You have to start it somewhere.
Yeah.
But we have to share the importance of it.
And Sagahaw, we'd be a little bit more responsive if we're having an issue on the flat, if they're already in this position. So they'll have more firsthand knowledge.
Right.
Yeah, because they know it's just a big step from the figure, you know, but they will, I mean...
It's what they do. Get to know all the, the people that are supposed to be there and the ones that are. Yeah.
Somebody can go with them and show them all the secret little hiding spots and stuff. Well, they'll take care of all of it, you know?
I mean, take a super handshake though.
Yeah.
Um, so should we direct, direct you to continue with negotiations and then have a special meeting for the 13th?
I, I think we should sign the, or work towards getting the MOU ready so that we can start it because we have to have this before we can even step forward.
Yeah, the 13th, on the 13th, the commissioners will need to agree to it. And then once Joel has the go-ahead, you'll be missing, oh, you'll be meeting on the 15th.
Okay.
So theoretically, we could enter into the MOU at that time.
Okay, that works.
And then, so a few more weeks, but...
I, I actually, I, I hope that we, um, move forward with this proposal, the MOU, um, and plug in what we have remaining instead of, you know, they plug in five. If you think we've got 10 or more, we should plug that in and put that in as an estimate for the MOU. You know, if we're, if we're up against a deadline of September 13th and our next meeting's not till the 15th, I think we should move forward with what we have today. I move that we accept this and, and you put the...
There's only two days to do it.
Yeah, but they, they're meeting with four hours.
They need to be first because they need to agree with it before you can sign off.
Right, so I think, I think we need to say yes, we have, this is what we're going to do in the MOU and then come back and we could commit to it.
But there's not anything to approve yet.
Right.
Well, they'll come up with their final on the 13th and then you guys can vote it on the 15th.
But we need to put all the money in there that we have for the MOU? I think we do.
Yeah, I mean, it will be an estimate. It won't be to the penny because I know Doug's going to have some additional hours, but...
So we'll just switch the marine... Yeah, just money into the fund for this, I guess.
Yeah.
So we continue with that?
To be continued.
Yeah, we have to do the public case on the 15th.
But I'd like Christine to at least give the total that we have available to make know what they're working with.
Yeah, I will. I've been back and forth with Joel, so we'll continue with that.
Okay. That works. Okay. Is that what you guys...
Sure.
Yeah?
Yeah, I think we're going to, excuse us, that's our... We've got ice cream, though.
Save me some, would you?
Just one question, maybe off your agenda, please tell me to be quiet, is, um, we were told by the road commissioners that the balance of Sabino Road was going to be paid. Where are the select board on that? It's, it's in pretty bad shape after the construction down there.
If he has it on his schedule, it will get paid. The select board usually doesn't get involved in those decisions. He just handles it.
And that's been caved by another entity. I don't know, so it's not, um, I believe it's Crocker who's doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Enjoy your ice cream. Go get Suzanne's ice cream.
Thank you for your work.
Thanks, Charlotte, yeah.
Thank you for your work.
Can we have the town administrators report?
On the same, O'Keo, um, the commissioners are leaving this on the 13th, is that it?
Yes.
All right. Uh, board members, anybody playing one?
I was playing on the one.
Well, I'll meet you then.
Okay, because they, they need during the mornings. I think, I'm not sure what hour, but I'll let everybody know what time of the meeting.
Would you let me know as well?
I can, I'll go.
Would you let me know as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like it.
Okay, I heard from Mike Carter from Sagahaw County Communications. Um, they will be conducting a drone survey tomorrow just to make sure that the property in general is suitable for a tower. They're doing the same thing in the other towns that they're looking at. If it progresses, he will come up with a memorandum of, of understanding of the town, um, for use of the property.
So we just want to let the audience know what that's for because I see some footprints.
Yeah, it's for a communications tower on, on property that's owned by the town West Bath by the transfer facility.
As a 911 communication.
Yeah, because Sagahaw County is using their COVID relief money to improve communications.
So that's pretty industrialized already, if you're going to use...
Yeah. So they'll be doing the drone survey. He'll be coming up with an MOU if the property looks the way they need it to. Um, if there are any other site visits, I ask that the board be included so that you can take a look at it too. Um, he is wondering about the town's expectations for the MOU. The other properties that they're looking at are private property. So the, the money that, or the compensation that those private property owners are looking for is more like, hey, you pay my tax bill, you can use my property. And he's wondering what the town would like to get out of it, if anything. So something to think about.
As far as I'm concerned, what the town would get out of it would be approved.
Yeah, sometimes you might ask for a leasing, um, if you're interested in going down that road or just require that they maintain everything a certain way, but think about what might be appropriate.
David?
I think it'd be, we should, the county's coming for it. It's going to benefit our communications, our 911, or this private property, animals, whatever else. It's also going to give the county a chance to lease out space on that tower, which will affect the whole county's taxes. And it's only going to, what, 100% of property? It's not going to be a big piece of land.
So I'm just thinking if we want the county to work with us on...
Anything.
Anything.
No, I think it's...
That we should...
It's, we're all part of the county of the government tax law too.
If we, if we ask for rent, then we're taxing ourselves because we have to get rent. It doesn't make any sense to...
No, I think, I have to tell the opposite. There's not a big use of that.
Strategically placed in a corner in case there's other use for that land down the road or you want to put it in, in obstruct future opportunities.
As long as we can dictate where the tower would be placed, I think that's...
I think a lot of that's just leg up in there anyways, isn't it?
That, here it is. It would be located near the highway, close to the highway.
I just think because they use the four-wheeler trails and a lot of that's all legged up.
Just steeped by the students.
That means the town will be sold.
But it's kind of hard to ask people to work with you and do favors when you're charging them for every...
Yeah.
Yeah, we want to work together.
It also benefits the town in any way.
Absolutely.
So we, we don't, let's see what the, let's see what the drone comes back with.
We, we would like the county to benefit as well as the town. And the town benefits if we have better communication. That's how I see it. And what else, what else do they need to know? You know, if we're charging...
And maybe they will...
Because we would charge us.
I can't say that we would, but I don't know.
Well, I think we just, and it should see what the drone comes back with. They, you know, want to see what they think the ideal locations for that versus, you know, certainly not smack and riddle of something and negating future use on that land for other things as well. So we just need to look at what they come back with.
Like put it on top of the same for the tower.
I asked him how they were planning on accessing the property, and he said that in all likelihood, they would try to access it from the rest area. So it wouldn't be from, you know, R3, we're going in that.
It would be from, yeah, and limited direction, limited access.
This would be, it would be a town meeting to sell land. If I get the land to the company, that has to be a town meeting function.
I would think so.
We can do that when we...
Do this, call it.
It's going to be a, a town meeting. The only thing that I can think of is, um, we should probably have as part of that, what happens when the technology changes and, and the tower needs to come down or if, if whatever becomes obsolete. The disposition should be included.
Now, that, I'd put in the thing where that's where they're responsible for.
They are, yeah.
They would be, yeah, we would just have to make that clarity agreement.
Yeah, it's not really, it doesn't happen.
We just reduce it out of our tax base.
Um, the Cassella contract, um, we're not going to be ready to go by September 30th yet. My recommendation would be that the board agree to extend the current contract for an additional three months to bring us to the end of the year so that everybody has time to review and have a contract that starts January 1st. But we can deal with that at the next meeting.
And hopefully the contract was, um, penalties for not doing certain things. I mean, if they go back to the practices prior to, right, a month ago, then we need to have some recourse. I mean, they've been great, but it took us a long time to get them to, yeah, abide by some of our...
That's true. We have different players now, and I think that's been helpful.
An attorney. Uh-huh. So just if the simple consequences that they revert back to those behaviors would, would be noticed.
So then what would our fee be for a three-month extension? We need to advertise that as...
It would just be for the same amount they pay monthly. So it wouldn't really be any change to the contract at all. It would just extend it.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, it's probably a good idea.
I move we offer an extension of the contract to, um, end at December 31st at midnight.
I second that. All in favor?
Good, thank you. That's all I have.
Future agenda items? Any public comment?
I, I have, excuse me. Uh, it took me a long time to think of it. Okay, computer personnel policy, soon.
Mm-hmm, we'll put that on the next agenda.
Okay.
Okay, back to the public. Any comment? Okay, we are, she didn't put the big thing on, I just, we need to go into executive session pursuant to one MLRS, chapter 13, or 5, 6A, just got a person on it. Thanks, everyone.
I mean, we don't need to stay.
Get out.